Good evening. Prior to our meeting, which will start in a minute, I'll call the public hearing to order, and this is regarding the town of East Lime's intention to acquire the abandoned cemetery known as the Riverhead Cemetery owned by, currently by, the Riverhead Cemetery Association. Before we do that, all those can please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Weber.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We also had a return of posting and publication of the notice of public hearing. It was published in the New London Day on 2/25, 3/4, and 3/11, 22. Sandy had like a staple mark going right through the date there, so I couldn't see it too well. So, anyway, so it was in accordance with what was required to this, and this is for the town to acquire the abandoned cemetery known as Riverhead Cemetery owned by the Riverhead Cemetery Association Incorporated on Boston Post Road on the, in southerly side of Interstate 95 and west of the property currently owned by Noble Gas Incorporated. And according to the town attorney, it's the only people that are allowed to speak at this if they are here in opposition to the town acquiring this property, and again, no money will be heard. But we can't allow anybody that would like to speak if we so desire. So Mary, would you like to speak since you are the only officer technically of the Riverhead Cemetery?
I don't really have anything much to say except that I think it's a very good idea.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, yeah. You should come on, Mary, just.
It's hard to hear.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea to get us under the shelter of the town so that nothing will change as far as how the cemetery is maintained at this point because we take care of it anyway, but at least it's under the town's jurisdiction, and it makes it all, ties all the loose ends together.
Okay.
So I'm happy about that.
Oh, you're Mary Cotillo, and your address?
Oh, seventy, I'm sorry, 74 Fairhaven Road, Niantic, for the Historic East Lime Cemetery's Association.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to regarding the public hearing on this? If not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Seconded, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And talking with town attorney, there is no additional action that the town needs to take. Both Sandy and I reached out to make sure that there was no motion. He said, no, the only thing we need to do is have the public hearing to allow people who were opposed to speak to it, but outside of that, we'll be in possession of it, so.
I will state for the record that I am a member of the Historic Cemetery Association, and I, therefore, I did not vote on this, but certainly am in favor of it.
Thank you, Roseanne. I'm sorry if I did not ask for abstentions. Okay, moving on, I'll call our regular meeting to order, and we've already had the Pledge of Allegiance. Any additional agenda or consent calendar items?
No.
Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak to the board on any matter at this point in time under public delegations? Okay. Okay, seeing none, we will start with the approval of the minutes.
Okay, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 16th, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, our next one?
Move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of March, of February 23rd, 2022, as submitted.
A second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and carried unanimously. Moving on to a special meeting, the next one.
Okay, move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann again. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carried unanimously. Public hearing.
Move to approve the public hearing minutes of March 2nd, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, sorry, Ann. I mean, sorry, Dan, Ann Beech is again, so. Comments or corrections? All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'll give that one to Roseanne. So, any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Consent calendar, tax collector said not that, there is none this week. She said everything was good, so we are good there.
That's great.
Moving on to new business, first on the new business, B will be tabled. Attorneys of Market and Mr. Mahal need to work a little bit longer on getting a zoning FEMA flood regulations, the ordinance together. They said if possible, could they have more time? I said, sure.
Do you want to add like the changes because they included?
I know. That's, that was part of what we sent back to them, so, and that's what they did not have to do tonight, so that's what, why it's been tabled, so.
Thanks.
It will be done. And also, D, the possible discussion, Justin Porter, we wanted the labor attorney to review that as well, and both Anna and I got the same response when we sent things off earlier in the week to a labor attorney. When he gets back to the office on Thursday, he'll review them, so he's obviously out of the office, and we felt that that wasn't a critical thing. So those two items will not be on the, up for discussion tonight. Ann?
Okay.
It's up to you and the ARP Subcommittee recommendations.
Okay, just, we are on this view, and it'll stay that way while I'm up there, I guess. Yeah, so you don't have to do anything.
Okay.
Okay.
I remember how to do it.
All right, okay. To wear three hats, okay? They got that.
All right, well, hello fellow board members. Ann Santoro here, member of the Board of Selectmen and also Chair of the ARP Subcommittee, and that's the Subcommittee that's reporting to you this evening. Tonight's presentation that you've received will be summarized and highlighted by not only myself, but members of, from the Subcommittee. The, will basically follow the order of the report, so if you have that or have it in front of you, that might be helpful. So I'm going to do some introductory, make some introductory points, some little bit of overview. My co-members on the Subcommittee will fill in other sections, and then I'll come back again at the end. So just a few, a few broad points I'd like to make. You, as you know, the Subcommittee was charged by the Board of Selectmen to develop a plan to appropriate and recommend appropriations for the remaining ARP funding. We had, we had, the town had previously spent a portion of its ARP funding, and in accomplishing this, two very important things had to happen. One is that the Subcommittee had to follow the ARP legislation and the massive set of requirements that the Treasury Department through regulations places on that to implement the ARP. So they had to do that, and the second thing is that, very importantly, and what we spent a lot of time on, was to basically come up with some sort of a system or process because even though the regulations are massive, there's no set of instructions that comes with them for a municipality. There are many, many requirements, but no instructions. So this is something that municipalities have pretty much grappled with since the ARP legislation came out in March of 2021. So to that, to that end, and more will be discussed about this, our group, I think, did a good job of developing a process that included everything from an application to evaluation worksheets, to meeting in sequence for eight weeks, and a number of other steps, all with a Subcommittee that tapped into the community, and we had community members as part of that Subcommittee. So just giving you those, that kind of bird's eye view of what our, our task was and the sort of subtask of having to come up with a process. And just as an aside, although a number of us had been to, such as myself or other members in Board of Finance or Selectmen had been to, to a number of, you know, seminars, webinars, whatever, you know, coming into this, there were no preconceived ideas as to what, what that process should really look like. There were some examples, but once we met, that process began to unfold. So I'd like to also point out that in the report, and this is another third sort of overview point to keep, keep in mind, the report is very objective. It may be a little dry, but the idea is that, you know, we're trying not to interject, you know, our personal feelings or thoughts, and it was really a group effort to come to decisions. And so you'll see that it's very fact-based, so I'm hoping that, you know, helps you in the, helps the Board of Selectmen in the long run. So I'm actually just gonna, the couple of sections that I need to summarize for you and highlight are Sections 1, 2, 3, and 4. So Section 1, I think some of this material you're familiar with because as Selectmen, you had to approve of appropriations, so you had to become familiar with the law and the regulations. So basically, the East Lime allocation for, from ARP, and in particular, the SLFRF fund was $5,463,839.68. That's a key number for you on page 1. In general, by the way, page 1 may, may serve as a good reference for you generally as you're deciding on appropriations. Some basic information is contained in this page. This, this amount was really out of, if you look at it, ARP is 1.9 trillion, the nationally 350 billion for just the SLFRF program, which is the program that touches municipalities, and Connecticut, 1.56 billion of that. So you can see that by the time it trickles down, that's what, that's what we are given. So the, your appropriations may, previously were made under the interim rule, Treasury Department's interim rule. Right after this, this Subcommittee was formed, technically formed on January 5th, on January 6th, the Treasury Department issued its final rule, and that's referenced here. If you're looking on page 1, it's the second paragraph, this, if you're looking online, this is a direct link to all that information, and this is a primary source. I post, this is a personal point, but I recommend that. There's a number of sources you can look at, but that's, that I think is, is key. In the rest of this, this page, you're very familiar with, I think, the timetable for use, eligible uses, prohibited uses, and these are outlined pretty clearly here, so I'm not going to go over them again and, and spend time on that. A last point on this page is that nothing in here concerns our school district. There's a separate set of funding under ARP that is directed to schools, and that came through the state, and then it was, was dispersed to schools, so that wasn't the subject of our work or of our report. So let's talk a little bit about previously appropriated, I'm in Section 2, previously appropriated East Lime ARP funds. So that total through January 5th of 2022 was what is $1,671,502. Like many, many cities and towns, East Lime decided early on that it would try to use the ARP funding to meet some immediate needs, and that's what was done. And there's an exhibit, I think it's Exhibit 2 in the back, that delineates by town meeting which of these, you know, appropriations were made. And so you can see that the dollars were directed to issues of food insecurity, mental health, public safety, failing water infrastructure, et cetera. In fact, on that last point, 920,000 of that 1 million, 1.6 million was for well five. Okay. There came a point somewhere in the autumn of, of the previous year where, after going through this process, it was suggested that going forward, we think about formalizing the process in some way and doing a little bit longer range planning. And in particular, one point was made that we should engage the community. And so that is actually what did end up happening, and the Board of Selectmen discussed this issue, and so we come to Section 3 where the Subcommittee is formed, and you're all familiar with that, that the formation of the Subcommittee, the charge to the Subcommittee, as you know, two Board of Finance members, two Board of Selectmen members, one representative from the town's small business community, one from the town's nonprofit organizations, and two community members at large. So that's, that's the general makeup. $3,792,337.68 is what remains in that, our little ARP bucket. Very important to point out that in the first set of appropriations, the charter was followed. We went through the usual appropriation process, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Town Meeting, and nothing changes here. We as a Subcommittee are advisory only, and so you can take or not take our recommendations, and the process continues on as it normally would. And that, that's been recommended by a number of attorneys, CCM advisors, it's even recommended in some of the, yes, 400 pages of the Treasury Department Regulations, which I have to tell you, think about this for a minute, 400 pages of regulations just for this one program. So you can imagine under the whole of ARP, the sets of regulations that exist. Okay. Next, and before my colleagues come up, a point should be made about targeting eligible So the, the American Rescue Plan is vast, and even within this SLFRF program that we're discussing and that is the heart of what we're doing, there are innumerable uses. So you have to think about how you're gonna target it. So early on, some of this was discussed, basically, our target, looking at a number of factors, was small businesses, nonprofits in town, as well as town needs. We did not go down the path of lost revenue, which is a legitimate, you know, possibility. You can, you can, even under the new rule, the final rule, rather, you can take a lump sum of that. We spoke with Anna Johnson about some, some, some issues with that, and that was not an avenue that we were necessarily going to, to take. I think it's up to $10 million that a municipality can actually take a flat sum of net revenue loss. We really didn't have, like, net loss in our grant, in our general fund, we had a small amount in Parks and Recreation. We also didn't pursue premium pay, and we also didn't pursue grants to individuals because this town isn't, isn't really set up, as are some larger cities, for that kind of distribution. So you'd have to import all kinds of help and consultants and have an administrative work to do that. So like many towns, we've directed to the small business community, nonprofits, and to our own services. There's an interesting survey that CCM just published when it published its revised toolkit for ARP, and it has a survey of what towns are doing, so you can see the various options. Some don't even deal with the business community or with nonprofits, they just sort of take their money and deal with, you know, town issues, depending if they've lost lots of revenue or whatever the issue is. So this was our, our direction and target. So with that, I think I pretty well covered the first couple of sections, and I'll introduce, let's see, Aileen Cahill, will, will talk about our methodology and how we got to all the, and, and all the various processes that we, that we utilized, and I'll speak to you later.
I'm Aileen Cahill. You need my address, like the other people?
Sure.
97 Scott Road, East Lime, Connecticut, formerly of Black Point. So just to give you, I am the member at large, one of the members at large on the committee. However, I feel incumbent upon me to say I have a degree in applied behavioral analytics and have done a lot of research, so the methodology hopefully reflects the rigor that I bring to the committee. So we developed, we met weekly, and we had a really great discourse, and we developed a small business and nonprofit application. We had a notification process to allow small businesses and not-for-profits to apply. The town, through the town, already knew about it, so we didn't need to notify them. But the notification process, we used social media for the Main Street community, and in East Lime Community Forum, we used the outside billboard, we put it on the website as the, like, new news information. If there was room for process improvement, we would say the press release that we would have hoped to have gone out would have gone out to get more small business applications, but, you know, that's just for future reference. The scoring process we used, we, you know, first of all, we, we heard town presentations. When we set out the announcement to the small businesses, we gave them two weeks to apply, which, you know, many of the members of our committee felt that we were being, rushing the small businesses because to comply with the town budgetary cycle, but be it as it may, we proceeded forward, and we, we had a scoring process that we decided, we verbally anchored a scale of, you know, 1 to 10, we had the criteria, we all evaluated both the town applications and the small business applications individually, and then we reported our evaluations in a group setting. And then, once we reported our evaluations, we calculated averages, and then we discussed it. And we had really good discourse in those discussions, and one of the things to note about the small business and not-for-profit applications, there's this thing called order bias. It exists, like, first in and last are, are preferred, so we made sure that we introduced no order bias, and we only evaluated the small businesses and the not-for-profits as a whole totality, so we all got the complete packet, and when I say a packet, you, you see the packet.
Yes.
We all got the packet all at once, and, you know, we had a opportunity to recommend in full what people applied for, we had a opportunity to recommend partial, or we had an opportunity not to recommend. In the small business, you know, in hindsight, they're not used to making, you know, whereas not-for-profits are used to applying for grants and of this nature, small businesses are not. So in, in hindsight, many of the incomplete, the small business applications were incomplete, and thanks to Sandy Anderson, she reached back out to them and said, you know, we need a little bit more information, as in a lot more information. And she did so very judiciously via email, so on and so forth, and, you know, we, we got more information from many of the businesses, but not for all of the businesses that we wanted. So I think, you know, the, the timeline was a challenge for small businesses, and if we were to be bestowed, you know, half of the committee expressed concern about the timeline of our process, but we were trying to be in concert with the budgeting cycle of the town, and in hindsight, if we had to do it all over again, perhaps we would have an opportunity to give the small businesses more time so that we could kind of handhold them to get up to speed on applying for the grants, so. And then, I think, who's up next?
Good evening. Pandy Woller, 266 Giant's Neck Road in Niantic, and I am, was one of the representatives for nonprofits. I have, I sit on three nonprofit boards in town and hopefully brought that expertise to the committee. We did receive 30 applications from small businesses and nonprofits. 10 of those were small business applications, and 20 were for the nonprofits, and as Aileen said, I, I think the nonprofits are more used to this type of application process. We ended up recommending all or partial funding for three of the 10 small businesses and 19 of the 20 nonprofits. In all, they requested $1,559,579 in funds, that's what their total requests were, and we ended up recommending $461,945 in distributions. And that was about 30% of the, their applications, their requests, and it was about 12% of the total funds requested. There was, of the 1.5 million, $1,017,000 that we did not recommend. I, I do want to point out that of the 30 votes we took, all but four were unanimous. There was robust discussion amongst the committee, and I, I think we did develop a good process and a fair process, and it was interesting as we went around the room and gave our, our scores, sometimes they were far apart, but they were consistent all the way through. Throughout the process, we reviewed all the applications within the context of the Act, and particularly, I found particularly useful the summary that CCM provided, and as it pertained particularly to small businesses and nonprofits. And one of the charges was respond to public health, mitigation and prevention, behavioral health and prevention, and responding to violence, and we did get some of those applications. We considered what other funding had been received by or was available to the small businesses and nonprofits as well. And while capital expenditures are allowed under the plan, the committee really focused on recommendations that I think had a more direct and timely impact on a larger number of people. We spoke many times, one of the overriding ideas that we considered in the application was that this was to provide economic recovery, not economic development. There were some applications we received that were very worthy, and they're things that would be good for the town, good for the town's people, but they didn't, weren't necessarily as impacted by the pandemic, and therefore, not so much for the funds. And we tried to do the most we could with the very limited resources we had. You know, it's wonderful that we got over $5 million, but given the needs, it, it certainly wasn't enough. I, I enjoyed working on the committee, I think we, we did have robust and, and very good discussions and very respectful, so I'm sure we'll get questions. I don't want to get into the individual applications, but, thank you.
Just really quick, Bill mentioned that there's a problem with volume on Channel 22, which there has been because they're trying to work out a problem. It's been existing since they moved the dispatch, but people can't hear with full volume and with no. But people can't hear with full volume and no problem at all on YouTube. So there is an outlet.
So you want us to speak a little louder?
Well, no. YouTube will be fine, but here again, it is a problem.
I'll try to speak a little louder.
Both Mike Mines and Carmen Ames and Star are working on this issue. So thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So I wanted to discuss the requests that were made by the town. The first selectman had sent out requests and said, you know, here's a certain date you need to tell us what you need. The issue is they were all really, you know, good requests. Obviously, they'll go through town council, but you know, it was our determination that most of them fell under the, you know, the final rule and were eligible for the ARPA funding. So the main issue was there wasn't enough money to fund all the requests. So I'm just going to kind of highlight some of the important ones that everything was, you know, if you look at the rankings, you know, everything was in like, I also want to say, when we ranked everything, the highest you could have was a 40. And we went around and got the averages. So with the town, I think everything is in like mid twenties to high thirties with the exception of like one or two. So that wasn't really the issue. It was more like, you know, what is most important? And when the department heads did give us their recommendations, we had them prioritize them. So we took that into account as we were doing it. So like, for instance, I'm going to go through these a little bit, but the public works, like in full, what we thought was like extremely important, like to the public health issue and townwide benefit was the new garbage truck. And then also replacing and upgrading the, you know, the air handler in the town and at the, was it Field Services Building? Because we thought these were directly related, you know, to the pandemic. Then there was also just kind of going down with the police department. They wanted interoperability between different towns. It was a communications radio system. So that was something that everybody, you know, agreed to pretty unanimously. Likewise, there was something with emergency management. So there were so many things that were just so related to the pandemic. Parks and Rec, they wanted a part-time prevention mentoring coordinator, which goes directly to public health. And with those, any of the positions that were funded, we did those with the understanding that this is a limited position and that the Board of Selectmen would have to determine whether or not we wanted it in the operating budget going forward. Also regarding Parks and Rec, there was a master recreation plan for Darrow Pond and that was funded in full. And part of the reason was because it's recreation for all, but also because it was on the northern side of town. So I thought that was important. And also another one I'll highlight is the Parks and Rec to do the restroom enhancements in the parks. That that was something that I think came to light during the pandemic and is, you know, extremely important. Let me see. Also, another one, just kind of giving the highlights, is the water and sewer. They did receive, as Ann Centora said earlier, well five reconstruction money of $920,000 under the previous administration. But you know, we know water and sewer is very important. So we were pretty unanimous on voting to upgrade the Niantic sewer pump station and recoating the Boston Post Road Water Tank, which I think is an eyesore and really needs to be done. So the only issue we really had was that we didn't have enough funds to, you know, to fund everything. There was, the only other thing I would say was there was a trash compactor for the library that wasn't recommended because the services provided by the town, and that was kind of like an emptying issue. So unless it, you know, most things were recommended in part, and if they weren't, it's because there wasn't enough funds. So altogether, let me get the numbers here. Give me one second. Here we go. There was $3,225,186.24 recommended. In addition to that, there was $100,000 put aside as follows. $75,000 for contingency for emergency management pandemic needs, say for masks and anything else that needed to be done. And then also $25,000 for attorney's fees and administrative costs. So that brought it to a total of $3,325,186.24, which was the total recommended for the town.
Yeah. Actually, I think.
Oh, Rich, I'm sorry.
If you have any questions.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Rich Steele. I was one of the Board of Finance representatives on this committee. And I'll just share some thoughts and ideas about follow-up and thoughts on the process. Recently, in the local news, we've seen reports of some fraudulent activity that had occurred with some of the rescue plans. And as a subcommittee, we felt it was important that perhaps there be some follow-up, perhaps a memorandum of understanding or some other agreement with recipients of the grants so that we know that the monies that we are granting are actually well spent. And this would also grandfather to those organizations that received money in the first tranche last year. In terms of, Aileen had mentioned about the timeline and the brevity. And we understand that it was important for the town budget, which we're in the process of going through budgetary hearings now, to know what items might be able to be taken out of the capital budget and that to implement a deadline to fit in with the town's budgeting process. With that said, we had some discussion early in our meetings about, did we want to have an allotment for the small businesses and nonprofits? Just designate an amount that would go to them and then have the remainder go to the town. We did not decide to follow that path, but what we did do is after we heard the presentations from the town departments on various uses of funding that they could envision, we initially evaluated the small businesses and the nonprofits. And so they weren't slighted by any lack of money. The slight that did occur though is for a town our size, we only received 30 applications. And so we did a good faith effort to get out there, to be transparent, to have the public be aware. But I think we missed the boat on some aspects. I would have hoped that we would have gotten more small business applications than we did. And you know, I think with a longer timeline, that also would have helped. But primarily, I think we need to develop processes to be able to get the public more engaged. And I think that's true of pretty much every board on, in this town, is that if we look, we don't see a lot of public involvement at our meetings. And I think especially on processes such as this, it behooves us to try to get as much public engagement as possible. And ideas that were suggested in the subcommittee were that we could have information sessions set up. We could have workshops for the business community. And as I believe it was Pandy had mentioned, that a lot of the nonprofits are much more experienced at the grant application process. And we could clearly see organizations that had that expertise be able to write really nice applications. And the other aspect of the application process is we have some applicants who are not English, native English speakers. And so I think that presents an additional challenge. And perhaps the handholding, as Pandy had mentioned, might be a good thing to kind of help those organizations get through, especially as our immigrant populations increase. And that, that's about all I'm going to say. I think points have already been made. I think the process worked out fairly well. We did have, in the scoring process, there were some criteria that we had evaluated that then got summed up and the sum was averaged. But some of these were more subject to interpretation than others, especially negative economic impact. That could be interpreted that maybe there was more utilization of those services rather than a negative impact. And then the other criteria were response will reduce the impact and is the request proportional to the impact that those organizations suffered or experienced, I should say. And the last point was that it promotes organization recovery and long-term growth. And that's where it can get a little bit subjective as to what is recovery, what is long-term growth, and what is development versus recovery growth. I think generally, as was mentioned, our scoring was, was pretty much within a narrow window between the ends of the evaluations. And I think the team worked very well together. My feeling is I would highly recommend to the Board of Selectmen that you follow through with the recommendations that we gave unless you see some extremely outstanding circumstances to, to alter them. There was a lot of work that was put into this and a lot of thought and a lot of dedication. And thank you for your time.
Thanks. Before we get to questions, you know, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things and, and just sort of make a couple of conclusory remarks. So Aileen had mentioned the timeframe for organizations to apply. So I just want to clarify for the record that the application appeared on the website to use, it was a fillable PDF, January 30th of this year, and the deadline was February 22nd at 2:00 PM. So that, that was that range of time. And on the town side, Mr. Siri had, our first selectman, had a January 18 request, email sent to all department heads. And their responsibility was to get back by February 2nd with information. So just to give you that, that sense of timeframe. And on the, on the point of time, I just want to mention that like many small towns in Connecticut, we were given a reasonably decent amount of funding, but we are not Hartford, New Haven and other larger cities that can kind of almost do a little bit of what I call rolling appropriation, which is kind of what we started to do at the beginning of the process. And then we decide that we need better process, more formality in some way. So once you do that, once you decide that you're going to formalize the process and you have applications or you ask your department heads to assess, then you necessarily create a system which is going to have deadlines. So there's kind of no way around it. You can't have it all kinds of ways. You know, if you, if you want to hold, as you know, the deadline for appropriation is December 31st of 2024. So you could, in theory, you know, keep marching forward inch by inch, but it doesn't permit you to get into the community, figure out what have been, what have been these effects of, of the pandemic. And it doesn't allow for, for really for longer range planning or at least some kind of good look at what your needs are on the town side. So I also wanted to mention that the criteria in the evaluation sheets, and those are in your exhibits, there's one for the town side and one for the small businesses and nonprofits. And those evaluation criteria were developed in two ways. One was through using some of the information we had gotten from town of East Windsor, which I'll come back to in a minute, but also more importantly, using the regulations that Treasury Department set forth. And if you, if you take a look at that link that I, that I threw in the report there, there you can see what the tests are. They're kind of legal tests. And so things like assessing the negative impacts, proportionality of the request and your granting of certain money, all those kinds of things, or proportionality between harm and request rather, all those tests appear in the regulations one way or another. So, and in the, and in the summary information that you'll find in the regulations. So although we had to create these documents, the parameters are pretty clear of what, of how you need to look at these requests, whether even, even on the town side. Or for example, are you right in an automatic eligible use, like for example, water and sewer infrastructure? That's the fourth of these various uses that are mentioned on page one, which I think you probably, you know, are familiar from, from having previously done your appropriations. So yeah, I think, and you know, just a thought on business community, I, this is a personal view and not necessarily the view of the, of the group, but I would want to say that it's difficult and somewhat speculative to figure out why you don't necessarily get more applications from business community. But there's something to keep in mind that the CARES Act preceded ARPA. And under the CARES Act, there was a number of programs, whether it was PPP or other loans. So some, so there could have been businesses that took advantage of that and other reasons why a business may feel that it is not necessarily going to request additional money. From the town, if it had gotten some other federal funding. So there's a number of factors and we're not, we weren't set up to investigate why, why that took place. But I think, you know, I think the, that's why I went back to clarify timeframe. That gives you a sense of both the town side timeframe and the, the organizational timeframe. And, and again, to keep that overarching thought in your head that once you formalize a process, you're going to have to create some kind of deadlines, whether they're short or longer in between, you know, it's just going to be part of the beast. So with that, I just want to say that I think overall, what I really liked about this, this process was that we did try to, to get into the community and get, and be connected better with how the pandemic affected everybody. I think that was, that was part of what was accomplished by this process. And then I think on, on the town side, I think we were able to do some short, shorter range planning, you know, figuring out needs and starting to prioritize. And prioritizing is very helpful, you know, in town planning. So I think those were good things. Another sort of benefit was some of the organizations that we, nonprofits that we have suggested to, to give money to and funding to are also a little bit beyond East Lime. So they're, I wouldn't say they're necessarily regional, but they are definitely are in our larger East Lime community. And that is something that CCM and even under the final rule is, is actually encouraged. And a final, sort of final word, I had spoken with, with folks over at CCM and in fact, Mike, who had done this great seminar, I think we all, as the selectmen, we've all watched it. The, the committee members here watched that as well. And they also, I had forgotten to mention this, perhaps one of us had forgotten to mention, the committee did a lot of work at the beginning to familiarize themselves with the law, the regulations. And all this, the new, the final rule coming into play was sort of good timing in a way because it had to be addressed. So we availed ourselves of information out there. So I think that was great. But back to Mike, who had done the seminar, when I spoke to him and I said, I'll send you some things we're doing. And he, he was impressed. I mean, he, he said, you know, you're on the right path of doing, you know, having a good process. So, so I think that, that says some good things. Last note, I just want to thank all the members for all your work and reading, because it was a lot of reading and a lot of long hours. We, we did compress, but rather than have, you know, 12 meetings, we had eight meetings and we stayed long. So, and Sandy for all your work.
And pretzels.
And pretzels, right. And pretzels, right. And, yeah.
I noticed all the.
Did you notice that? Okay. Well, we ate them. Yeah.
It was our dinner.
That's right. And I did want to mention that early in the process, Julie Wilson was very helpful with the fillable PDF and helping us get, putting an advertisement on TV, on our government and school channels. So that was very helpful. And Mike Mines helped us tremendously with what we needed to put onto the web page was not just the application, but again, more information. So I think, given everything, you know, we really touched on a lot of topics, you know. Nothing is perfect, but I think, you know, you all have done a great job. So thank you. And thanks. And any questions?
Any questions? I mean, there's lots, I'm sure. And just what I did do, the four items that they had said they were on the town side, the garbage truck, the town hall air handlers, Darryl Pond Recreation Area, Recreation Area, and restroom enhancement, since they might possibly affect the budget, those are the only ones that the town attorney has taken a look at and said, given a thumbs up to as of this point in time. So just those are done. But the rest will, of the recommendations, will go to town attorney before and get their thumbs up or thumbs down prior to any action being taken. So, questions? Bill?
So, I mean, I've read this package and to say that you put this together for sure. None of them, you did.
Bill, I can assure you the volume will not.
Yes, you'll have no volume. Thanks. Thanks, Kevin.
It looks like six or eight months' worth of work, so good job. I think I heard a couple of times through the process that it was kind of timelines were short. In full disclosure, one of these applications I submitted, and I'm very involved with, so I'll be abstaining when it comes to the voting part. But I've been a project engineer at Bratton Whitney for 20 years, and I know that when you put together an estimate in a short amount of time, it's not a lot of fidelity, right? So when you go to execute the plan, things don't always turn out the way that you think they're going to. I look at some of these estimates, the town drop box is $2,659.90. That's probably a pretty good estimate. Building access is $100,000. That's probably a, you know, something like that. So Mr. Steele was saying that there's going to be some closing paperwork, MOU, or some kind of, you know, form like that. Is it going to have, have you thought through how much that estimate, the accuracy of that estimate, when it comes time to do the report, and somebody said, "I need to buy X for $50," and then they find out that it costs $40, and they spent the other $10 on something to enhance that. "I was going to buy a shed." The shed was $100 less than I thought, so I spent $100 on gravel leading up to the shed. Is there going to be some kind of latitude in there to say, "I underspent, I overspent, and I spent the rest of the money in kind on something directly related?"
Sure. I can, I'll start, and then you can jump in. Okay. So the Town of East Windsor was my kind of go-to because after going to a particular CCM seminar, the First Selectman of the town described his program, which was basically very business-oriented. It's a very business-oriented town, farms as well. So he took care of that part first. Now he's doing all infrastructure and all town side. I spoke to him recently again, and, well, I spoke to him at that conference, and then I spoke to him recently, a couple of weeks ago, with the specific question about follow-up. And to your particular question within that, within the document that he provided, which we have now been able to share with our town council because they're taking a look at it, yes, the question, it's basically that type of agreement will require that you do what you say you're going to do with the funds given. But it also requires you that if there's, if you're really not going to use the funds, or there's some dramatic change or something, inform the town. It doesn't mean that they're going to come and take the money away or anything like that. So that's one of, there's a number of provisions within that sample agreement that I've seen, which look like it addresses those kinds of common issues that may come up. Another thing that I had a conversation with Anna recently about cleanup, when do you start the cleanup process? Because some things will be, you know, under what they say they're going to be. And so we have $5,000 plus remaining from our suggested appropriation. So we kept a little bit. And what happens to that? So that will go into a little pot that Anna was suggesting that maybe end of 2023, beginning of 2024, you start to do some cleanup, you know, particularly maybe on town side where some of those were rougher estimates, you know, some of them, maybe not all of them. So there's definitely a process to complete, you know. And that's why getting this done, although it seems sometimes a bit of a hassle at this point, everything takes so much time, you know. To get to that point in 2024, you will have had to have done something like this, you know. But to your point, back to your point, yes.
So that'd be some kind of amendment?
It's an agreement, but it's not especially onerous in any way. I've read through it. When I looked at it, I thought, "This can be condensed. It's maybe like three pages long. I think you can say what you have to say in a page and a half," you know. And our town attorneys, I think, will just adapt that. And it seems reasonable, you know. Again, another topic not addressed by ARPA and its regulations, how do you do the follow-up? It's another, there's no instructions here. What do we do? So that was, I was very thankful that the First Selectmen shared that with our town.
It's going to save us some money, too, because town attorney now, they loved it. So they said they just have to make some modifications. So it's really, you know, a nice document that they ain't got, you know, provided, too.
But that document says what that modification procedure is? I mean, you're not going to want to go to town attorney to say, "We spent $12,000," or $50,000.
No, it's not. Yeah, I think it's just keeping informed, you know, keeping that communication open between town and recipient. That was the gist of it. And basically, kind of a little attesting to, yes, I'm going to do what I said I'm going to do if I got money from you, the town.
Which is what's good about that MOU.
Yes. I think it's fair. It's a fair, it's very fair. And I don't, I mean, same thing with our application. I found it fair and concise. It was not onerous. It was not, that was another thing, even though time was not, you know, maybe we want another week in there. But I found that so streamlined that compared to, like, the federal applications and everything else, you know, very different. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's the only question I have.
Okay. Was that?
I'm also.
Dan?
Just sort of the other side of that question. What is our reporting responsibility back to where we receive the funds from?
Okay. Probably Anna can answer that best, but I do know that there's an April reporting, and then as, our type of town would do a yearly reporting. Do you want to describe that? You can, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, just at the beginning of the week, we received some communications from the state relative to the reporting portals that we're going to have to go in and report. But one thing that I do want to say is, like, I'm the designated person for the town that will be doing the reporting, and as such, I will be certifying, you know, that, how the funds are expended, and that, basically that they're being used for their intended purpose. So I really am pleased to hear that we're going to be using an MOU because that's going to be a certification that we're going to have as documentation for this process. But the first reporting is due next month, actually. So.
Any other questions, Dan?
No, that addresses it. Thank you.
Yeah. And one thing I noticed about the entire subcommittee is the questions we have, you already have answers. I mean, everybody really worked hard on this. I mean, it was really, really impressive because here again, you know, that was a question that they anticipated. Same thing with coming up with the scoring thing. And they made sure that, you know, it wasn't done in a way that they could influence each other's scoring. It was done, you know, autonomously. So.
Right. We only shared that scoring.
Once you got together.
Once we got together. So everyone went home and did their worksheets. And the scoring, then we did a scoring of the group, and then that scoring was only a part of that final decision. That's an important point, I think, too, to make, is that, you know, our final recommendations are recommend in part, recommend in full, don't recommend, or not enough information. Those are the basic places you could land. But to get to those endpoints, we used a numerical evaluation, you know, that got the conversation going, you know, why so low, why so high, whatever. So, okay.
I just want to say, I mean, this was a tremendous amount of work that you did as a committee, and it's very impressive to me to see how it came together, interpreting the law, and then interpreting, finally, coming up with a process. And everyone there, I mean, you all brought all your various skills together to make this thing happen. And I certainly, I know the board appreciates it, and I hope that people in town that are watching and really see that this was done in a very above-board way and a terrific response.
I love the fact that the report at the end, you can read and understand.
Thanks. Well, coming from you, you know, you as a lawyer and Phil as an engineer, appreciated. So thanks. Thanks.
You know, and I've seen the amount of work you've done on this, Ann.
Thanks.
And I've seen all of you here on, you know, Thursday night. I'm sure you're just looking forward to Thursday night that.
That's right. That's right. You don't have to do.
And the amount of work, too. And I think that, you know, here again, not everyone's going to be happy, sadly. But this shows an immense amount of research that went into your decisions. It just wasn't in a vacuum or anything like that. And so I appreciate, and I know I've expressed it to you, Ann, many times.
Thank you.
How, you know, what a great job you've done. And I think this is what the community was looking for.
Yes.
We cast that wide net. And Rick, you know, the things, let's hope we don't have to do this again to figure out how to recover from something like this. But I think, you know, we're in uncharted waters, and I think all of you deserve a tremendous amount of credit for, I think, getting the word out as well as could be done.
Right.
You know, and I know we've had the day reporter in here at meetings when we talked about this. So I think we, you know, so thank you. And here, yeah, we won't be voting on anything tonight. Like I said, I had this done in case we wanted to talk about. But we are going to, prior to that, we're going to wait, we have three weeks to our next meeting after tonight, which allows town council to really take the time to come up with that memorandum of understanding, as well as giving their, you know, evaluation on all that was recommended.
Yeah. And just for the record, too, the town attorney approvals were done, and it was very articulate and direct about that way back when, where we really had to make sure that whatever we're doing, that the town attorney reviews those, you know, those applications. So the same system before, same system now. So, well, thanks.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you.
Thanks.
Okay. Let's take a five-minute break, and I'll, okay, we are back. And again, Ann, thank you and your committee for really, both Ann's, for a really stellar job. I mean, that's very impressive. Moving forward, as we said, Mr., I don't know if you noticed, but Mr. Mahalan came to mention why they wouldn't be ready, so I told them, "No, they already know that." So he said, "It'll be all set for next time." And I mentioned, Bill, the concern you had. He said, "Any concerns, just get ahold of him and he'll, you know, make sure that they're addressed." Moving on, proposed town policy on curbside garbage and recycling collection. Joe will explain this, too, but, you know, we have more and more places coming online, more and more people wanting garbage pickup. So he's going to address this tonight, and he has a policy. This is just for discussion tonight, because obviously it's our first look at it, to talk about it. So we'll discuss it and put it and keep it on the agenda for action at a future date. Joe?
Thank you. You know, you would think that a policy for curbside garbage and recycling collection, it's like, why do we need that? But this is actually really, I reread it before the meeting and, you know, read my memo, and just to make sure I knew what I had to say. And it's actually struck out to me as even more important because it's like life, liberty, and the pursuit of garbage pickup. I mean, since the pandemic, it's unbelievable, the demands as far, it's our biggest call. PD has speeding, we have garbage pickup. And we try, and as the director of the department, I try as best I can to work with people and do the best I can, but the demands of people and what they expect, and, well, just because we went by and they put their garbage out at 12, you know, they pay taxes, we got to get back there. We're running around, we're running around like chickens with our hick cough. And this really, we really need to, I think this document, I wrote down a few notes, it really does protect the town. And I just wanted to have a few bullet points in, if you have any questions. But it allows us to administer the trash program in the most cost-effective and efficient way. I mean, if people didn't put their cans out right, or they didn't follow the rules, I mean, people have to follow how we pick up the trash. It's crazy what people are doing now. Like, we had an instance where, the other day, where someone wanted another trash can, so they took their recycling can and painted it brown. And people put out non-trash cans. Another big thing that came out here was, this whole program is about 20 years old now, and everyone got a can 20 years ago. They're out of warranty. So unless the town wants to start supplying everyone with a can again, when we tell them that their can, they have to pay for the can, that's included with my taxes. You have to give me a can. I'm like, "Excuse me? No, I don't. We cover the pickup of the garbage, not the can itself. That's your responsibility to take." So that's a liability to town. We do have, and I put in here, and a lot of people might not be aware of it, but we go to Chapman Woods, Chapman Farms, Sleepy Hollow, all these private areas that are private roads. Now, we're not, I'm not suggesting to pull that back. It's very hard to do that. We don't have any, I mean, and I know there's a few attorneys on this, we don't have any permission to go there. There's no identification. There's, we're just driving on these places if anything happens. So we don't want to get anything too complicated. We have a quick four or five-page document. I did go through this with Sea Spray. That's condos up on Freedom Way. That's like a condo complex. And years ago, well before my time, they started picking up trash in there. And it's crazy. Then we go up there. So we made them sign an agreement, and we made them, "This is how you will do it." And then, as was put in here, they just recently asked us for an additional 20 cans of garbage and 20 cans of recycling. I'm like, "We're not growing this, we're not growing this in here." And they didn't like the answer. Well, then I went to the First Selectman and Mr. Siri, and he says, "Well, do you have a policy?" And I said, "That's a good idea." So I wrote a policy. So I put this together. So that's the expedites of why we did this. Ensures we cover the liability. And just to continue, the thing about the spray painting the can brown, just because they could put more trash in it, I mean, the state law is that you have to recycle. And just being consistent, we, our department really strives to be consistent. We have two new developments, Gateway, the whole Gateway complex, when they have all the town homes up there, the new one, Rocky Neck Village, we refuse garbage pickup. That's a private development. We don't pick up trash in private developments. They could just say, "Oh, no, you're gonna." But we fended it off because if the town wants to start doing that, and I'm just talking private developments, if anything's a town road, we pick up on town roads. But as more private developments come in, this policy would protect us from, "No, this isn't something that the Director of Public Works is making up. It's the Board of Selectmen. This is the policy of town." So that's, you know, so we put this together. I do have one development like this, as I said, Sea Spray condos. If the Board so chooses to approve this, or if any modification need to be, I'd like to go out to these other developments. I'm not going to start getting on them. I'm just, you need to sign this stuff saying that we're allowed to come in here. This is the day we're going to do it. You have to follow our rules. Because the other thing is, we don't, all these other places, we don't salt the roads, we don't plow the roads. We had issues with one of these Briarwood states where there's potholes all over it. Our garbage truck is, you know, if there's anything wrong with the roads and we don't maintain them, then they have to, we send out a letter to them saying, "You need to fix the roads." If they don't do it, then we're not coming in. It's not, we don't have to because it's a private road. We have no control over your road, so you need to keep it in a condition. It needs to be paved. So that's, I tried as best we could to cover it. I hope it made some sense. I'm certainly, at this point, open for any questions. But that's the reasoning. It really protects the town, protects the department. It still tries to ensure the best quality service, customer service. We're not trying to, you know, especially the people in town approve roads, you know. We work with the people as best we can, but it's crazy. I mean, every single day, it's just constant calls to the old department, "You missed my can," but it wasn't out. You know, the, people don't realize that it's not always the same driver on the truck every day, so they don't necessarily pick up the garbage at 9:05. It might be at 1:00. So don't call us at 9:10 and say, "Your garbage wasn't picked up." And the other thing is, not all our garbage trucks are alike. So some people like to put the cans together. It's an arm. And I am going to work with, trying to do videos of myself, of trying to get it out on social media and stuff like that, of showing people the process. A lot of people at work, they don't realize why we say that before we depart. So these are kind of important things to us so that we can effectively, cost-effectively implement this program. So if you have any questions, but that was the purpose of this. I think it is an important policy.
Any questions for?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, when these condominiums First of all, when these condominiums first began, we did not pick up trash in those condominiums, and I'm surprised you can't find a policy, because we did not do, they, they had to bring all their trash cans to the curbside.
Are you talking C-Spray?
I'm talking all of the early condominiums, it was our policy that we would not provide in-road pickup, they had to be brought to the side of the road.
To the front of the, of the complex, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, over time, now, I started here in 2013, I can't find anything.
And so, so somewhere along the line, we started doing that, we also didn't do businesses, somewhere along the line, somebody decided we would do businesses, so we're our own worst enemy sometimes, that we don't follow through, and I, I have no idea why there wasn't an existing policy, but somewhere along the line
I wrote one.
I know.
I, I can't answer any, all valid points?
But now, but now we're in a bind, because we've provided the service, so now, we've got, we can't very well say, now, we're not going to do it.
But we're not going to grow it, that's what, so C-Spray's a perfect example, why we're up there, I have no idea, it's hard, we probably pick up about 40 cans, I don't know the exact number, I think it's about 140 units in there, so it was a huge alarm that went off in my head, they want 20 more cans, so 20 more residents are going to get them, and then, two weeks from now, we're going to get another 20, and then we're going to have 140 cans up there, we basically told them, they all have to be on the same side of the road, they all have to be out by 7, we're not giving you any more cans, you have dumpsters, so, and when I sent that, and I copied the first settlement, they didn't like the answer, but I'm, that's the answer I gave, so I'm looking for the backing of the board, and I think that you guys are in agreement, that we're not growing these services.
Well, we also should be not having vehicles on roads that do not meet town standards for road width, any of these condominiums were allowed to have less than standard width roads.
If, if that's just the section that the board wants, I'm all for it, we pull it out, it's just, it's, I say this, I mean, it's very difficult to get in Chapman Woods, and Chapman Farms, and so that, and a lot of the trucks are backing up, I mean, I mean, if anyone's ever been in those neighborhoods, backing a 40-foot truck down some of those tight roads, and, and a lot of times, the next thing is, they're calling the first settlement, because they don't like my answer, so I, we're trying as best we can, and my highway superintendent and the staff is really, I kind of change, what the problem is, that people are starting to realize, why are you bugging us now, that we're putting our foot down, just like you're saying, we're, enough, this is how we're doing, this is how we're collecting trash, if you don't like it, then we're not going to pick it up, but we're trying to be polite, we're trying to be customer service friendly, but you have to do it the way, it has to be out by 7, it has to be spread out, we're not going on private roads, but, I don't really, I mean, if the board wants to back me up, I'll pull it from these neighbors, but it's hard to do it
They were supposed to have a central area for collection, is that in this policy? The cans had to be brought to one central area, so that our vehicles weren't driving around in this.
So, what, what this says here, in the second page, is on item number C, 1C, on the second page, any particular requirements for that specific location, so if, say it's Chapman Woods, Chapman Farms, Sleepy Hollow states, if there is an agreement of that, it's going to have all the standard information, indemnification, giving us permission, insurance, all that stuff, and then, anything specific to that will be named in there, that you have to do this, like in C-Spray condominiums, all the, all the cans had to be on this side, I gave them a map, they all had to be on this side, because, don't forget, the arm is on one side, so if they go around, they have to, they have to be on this side, so we get one loop in, one loop out, we're not, you know, because if they put it on the other side, we have to go in, and then we have to backtrack going out, like, everyone forgets, the arm is on one side, you can't, so, so I think that covers it, Roseanne, as far as that allows me the opportunity to get the specific things, but the, they did sign the C-Spray condominium, I worked with Attorney O'Connell, this is about two years ago, and I'm just about to embark on going to these other associations, and I'm just guessing they're going to get a lot of kickback of like, I'm not signing this, and I'm like, well, it's the policy of town.
Is it in here that the trash lid must be down?
It's not, I can add it.
I believe that that was also something that was in the policy when we got the cans, that the cover has to be able to be closed, every trash day, I am out picking up my neighbor's trash from my yard, because they overfill the cans, and then, when the wind comes up, the trash closes.
I can add that in, if that's, again, if the, if the board so chooses with that amendment or any other amendments, I can add that in there, or I could come, I could
And the other question that I get frequently is, why can't our recycling be picked up every week?
So, we're working towards that, up till now, we haven't, it's like a manpower and it's a truck thing, lately, we've had, and you've heard about the, and I appreciate that the ad hoc committee was supportive of the garbage, the trash, we've been down a lot of times in the last few months, down to two trucks, typically, every day, we have two garbage trucks on the road and one recycling, we got a hook truck a few years ago that allowed us, the recycling truck does not, so all our recycling in town goes, is driven up to Willamette, so that's a two, two-hour round trip for a big truck like that, two hour and 15 minute round, so, we're bringing all our recycling to the transfer station now, and keeping that truck in town, so I am working towards trying, that's my goal, is to get recycling every week, I'm just not there yet.
I'm not asking for it to be every week, I think it's fine the way
Oh, well, I'm working towards it, but I'm not, I'm not going to commit to it until I think it's, until we have the manpower and the, and the trucks, the reliable trucks to do it, but I, I get a lot of that, and I get, I get a lot of the people that say, why not pick up trash every other week, and the recycling every week, and then I say, in the summertime, that would smell nice, and then they'll, oh, I forgot about that, so, I mean
I think every other week is fine, but just to say that people are asking
I, I think it's really important to have the, you know, to get the information out there about spacing those units, you know, four feet apart, I see, I drive around, I see them all the time, they're right next to each other, and I know it's a problem for your drivers.
So, it's a goal of mine, and I, and I've been saying it, but I will do it, and I'll commit to you guys, but if I take, if I take a video of a truck, and show the arm, and put that on social media and stuff, and then with a, this is why you need a four feet, there's going to go, there's going to be a little lightbulb moment.
I have the sticker, I have my lid replaced a couple of years ago, and on top of it is, says, you know, five feet apart, so
It's a little monstrous, I need space.
Bobby Schultz has a couple months left, he can take a leisurely drive around town on garbage pickup days, and put them
Yeah, our sanitation foreman is retiring after 47 years, Mr. Schultz, in May, so
But, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good point.
But that's one of
You know, maybe even on the sign out here, once in a while, on the electronic sign
You're too far away from your
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, um, you know, on the electronic sign, every once in a while, have, hey, garbage cans, 7:00 AM, four feet apart, and, so people start to, start to sink in a little
Well, the other, the other one is that if people's can is stolen, they think it's the department's responsibility to replace it, well, I didn't take it, someone took it, so, like, well, you have to buy a new can, no, I don't, you have to provide me a new can, this says very specifically, if you lose your can, every can has a number on it, that's another one of these public services, that, take a picture of your number, and then walk around your neighborhood, someone has it, so, I mean, it's a, it's a big number, the letters are two inches high, so
I do have a kudo for you, and for the, for the employees, somewhere along the, one week, my trash can, apparently, the gripper didn't hold to pick the can up, and the can fell over, the trash, the, I think it was recyclable, came out, and I thought, well, later, I'll just go up there and pick it up, but somebody came back, somebody, somebody from the department came back in a couple of hours, came back, picked it up, picked the can up, and picked up the trash.
It was probably a former student, Roseanne, you know that.
Yeah, it had to have been a student, good chance it was a student of yours.
Could be.
Okay, what I'll do is, any further comment, Bill, you have your, Anne?
New people in town, new houses being built, do they get a can?
They'd buy, so the policy is, if you have a new house, you have to buy your garbage can, hundreds of bucks, free recycling can, second can, trash, 220, second recycling one, so it's 110, the reason we paying, charging people 200 double for the second can, is they're using, they're actually getting a bargain, because they're saying they need twice as much trash, and the town is paying for the trash, so we're trying to, you know, if anyone remembers way back when, the pay as you throw, and the
I remember the bags
I'm just saying, that, that is actually still out there now, and I was at SCAR today, and that's where the state and, you know, Stoneton still does that, and that's where they'd love for that to go, is, is it's a user-based thing, but our, our user base is that if you want an extra can, you're paying double for it, so we're trying, trying to implement, penalize people for producing more trash, and it still doesn't stop them, they want more, and we've actually cut them off, two cans tops, because, I mean, I don't need a resident to have five cans, that's unnecessary.
Is this the trash or the recycling?
Trash, recycling is targeted, too, but the problem also is, when you get these cans, you have to, they come from like, wherever, somewhere in the middle of the country, and they always want them in a package of like, 200 cans to make it for shipping, so it's like 18, $20,000 a load, I don't have 18 or 20,000, so we're limited, we're not trying to just give everyone cans and growing this program to no end, so, you know, we're just, we're not, we're trying to limit it to cans each.
I got the GPS locator on mine.
Okay, good.
That's, that's very smart.
And the can of brown paint.
Yeah, and with the, came with the paint.
So, I'm sure I'm in the minority here, but to me, a taxpayer that's paying taxes like everybody else, has the right to have their trash picked up, if they're in a condo, I think it's a different situation, if they're on a non-standard road, I think it's a different situation, so I would think that the policy would want to say that any road that conforms to town standards, right, so if it's too small, too narrow, too windy, and everything else, big truck can't go down it, nope, we're not doing it, and then I support saying, no, we're not going to go down that road, if it's a standard, if it looks and smells just like every other town road, if we get approval from the association to drive down it, I wouldn't be opposed to picking up taxpayers' trash.
That would, if that's the case, that should be identified in the planning and zoning process, in my opinion, the zoning process, that's a perfect example, Rocky Neck Village, it's 24 feet, does that mean it looks like a road, but it mean, the houses are all on top of each other, and we worked with Mr. Mahalyn, and said, we're not picking up trash, this is a private development, and drive down there, and they're garbageing now, there's so many cans out there, it's like, it's like a pinball machine, thank goodness we're not down there.
So, it's going to say, so, let's say they have a condominium where you don't pick it up, then do they just have to say
Dumpsters. Yeah, dumpsters.
Like, is it common for you to then
Yeah, yeah, so the C-Spray has, I mean, I'm not sure if that was the condos that Roseanne was talking about, but they have dumpster pads, they have dumpster service, they're just, it's, it's, they don't have to pay for the trash, if the town picks it up, that everyone has to pay if it goes in the dumpster, the dumpster company, so that's why a lot of businesses have got away from having dumpsters, because why were they going to pay the dumpster, and they have, you know, $1,000 a year when they can buy a $100 can from the town, and, and roll it out to the street, and for free, so that's why if you drive down on Tuesdays downtown, there's like a zillion cans, and, and, not, once you say, once they have them, I, it's hard to pull them back.
So, the other question I have is, not exactly, but the recycling, do you mean put up, like, maybe on the website, what can be recycled, because
It is on the website.
It is, okay.
It's very clear.
That's a big question.
And we also have stickers, and we could do a better job of getting stickers, but we actually have a sticker that's, it's colorful, it's, it's good size, I don't know, six by four, that we put right on top of can, on the recycling can, that says what can go in and out of, because you, I mean, I, you wouldn't believe what people put in a recycling can.
Joe, could you give, I mean, people are always in the clerk's office, I mean, they walk in there all day long, that'd be a great place to have a stack of those, and they might go
I probably have 200 stickers in my office, so I can have them up there tomorrow.
Yeah, just to put, you know, a place like where they frequent, and that
Yeah, but it is on the website, all you got to do is Google
There's also the boys guys looking for Eagle projects, and that could be a good Eagle project.
It's, yeah, it's, it's an important thing, and, you know, obviously, everyone wants to recycle and do the right thing, but people, they call it wiscycling, you know, just because they think it should be recycled, you know, I'm going to throw pillows in there, because that should be recycled.
Okay, we all know about that one, so
Yeah, you know where that's from.
Yes.
But just, people like to recycle, because they think, you know, oh, rubber hose, that should be recycled, that should be recycled, and what should be recycled are two separate things, it's what the recycling place takes.
Well, styrofoam has that little stamp on it for recyclable, but that's not something we
Styrofoam is not recyclable material.
I thought, because I took that little thing on it, that you could, but it has to
All the packing styrofoam?
Yeah, but I think that, that's a special type of, it's not something that we
No, that, no, that's recyclable.
Okay.
Pizza boxes, no, because
Wrapping paper?
Uh, wrapping paper, no, paper is
So, wrapping paper, I don't think
Yeah, I'd have to look in that, it's on the list.
Yeah, but shiny paper wasn't.
Pizza boxes aren't?
Pizza boxes are
The oily
Yeah.
If it's got the oil, it's contaminated cardboard, it actually ruins the rest of the cardboard.
That's why a lot of
Because it's got oil in it, you can't, you can't get the organic oil out of it, so if you have a pizza box, the box itself, but it always has that piece of cardboard underneath that, that's garbage.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
I mean, I could put a thing on recycling, it's, public education is an important part of this, maybe, part of the thing is that there is a policy, we can put it on if the board so chooses, but I think it would really help us to, so, we just seem like we're the, you know, the public works department is the cops, and this is a town thing, it's not a public work, I'm not making things up, I'm just trying to do the right thing, but
Well, you know
Now, if we could just get the manufacturers to put numbers in the little triangle that you could actually read, so that we would know
You can put all plastics in the recycling, that's what, that's what SCAR tells me, they will take them up in Willamette waste, all, it's not just ones and, it's not just ones and twos, they'll take all of them, it's actually on our website now.
All plastics.
Well, then you can expect gray cans to be full.
That's, that's
I can recall, my parents lived in New Haven, and your recyclers, all the cans had to have the labels off and be rinsed out, can imagine if we had to do that there, I mean
Well, they want you to clean them, but yeah.
Well, I mean, I do clean them out, but I don't take the label off. Any other comments?
I mean, you don't have a sink table and soak them?
No.
And soak the laces off?
No.
Is it just, well, because there's cameras on the trucks, to go to trash
There is a camera, there's a camera that's looking at the hopper, so they, they can look to see when they make that drop, so
So, someone calls and complains, and did you, like, you don't know which garbage truck was supposed to be on their road, or, you know
Oh, we have GPS on the trucks.
Oh, you did, okay.
Oh, yeah, all the trucks have GPS on them, so if someone calls, we just look them up, no, they're, they're around the corner, we know where they are, but as far as what gets dropped in, there's a camera that can see what stuff sits dropped out, every once in a while, a garbage can will get dropped in, and then we'll replace their can, but we actually had, two months ago, I remember showing to Kevin, someone must have put burning embers in the recycling
Oh, that they had a fire.
Yeah, the garbage truck was on fire, it pulled into the highway yard with, with smoke coming in back, we dumped it, I have a video, it was just a big
This was two days after the Midway Mall fire, so it was a really good week for
We had fire trucks and everything come, because their truck was on fire.
That's terrible.
Because someone, I, I know what, I won't say, but I know what neighborhood it came from, because you, you know, based on where it was in the truck, and where they were, where it was.
And that's why the trucks are stored outside, they are parked inside the
We, I never understood that.
Garage at night, because the, that, and also the fragrance of
Because that happened, that truck pulled in at the lot at 3:20, and if our practice was to park it inside, and someone had picked that, and everyone went home 10 minutes later, the field service building would have been on fire, but we never park a loaded truck in the, inside for that very reason, because you never know what's in it.
Okay, if, we'll, we'll put this back on for approval, and a vote at the next meeting, if anyone has any changes, just email them to Sandy, and then we can incorporate it into the document, we appreciate it, and we'll hold on to the next meeting, any further comments? Joe, thank you. Joe, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I also like the color choice, it's one of my claims to fame, brown and gray.
Oh, okay.
Those were your picks?
Yes.
Well, people are, people are trying to paint them, so I don't know, you might have, take offense to that.
Those are my pleasure.
You would not believe the number of hours that were spent discussing.
The color, the color of the can?
Yes, and the size, and whether to have round or square.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. The next item is, as I said, Justin Porter, that is, we have to wait for our labor attorney to get back to us on that, make sure he says okay to that. And discussion and comment, I, we had, I talked with Jeff Newton yesterday. I told him we'd be meeting and talking, and we would have, and then I also talked to the Board of Finance. When did I meet with, last night we had a meeting there, and I said we would have our comments to them just by the end of the week, so they would have them available for their discussion, because the Board of Ed presents to them Monday night. So anybody, because, comments on the Eastland Public School budget?
I made my comments at the last meeting.
Okay.
And I would hope that those would be reflected.
Okay.
I think, but I think to have that budget placed in front of us that night, and to have to make a decision, this was unheard of. And to have superintendent here, and present, and then to be expected to ask appropriate questions. In all my years, I've never seen, I've never seen that happen. And also, generally speaking, the Chair of the Board does an initial presentation and overview, and Chairman of the Board sat here, and we heard no comment from him until he was recognized at the end of the meeting. So I certainly hope that this is not going to be the procedure for next year.
Any other comments?
I had a, I had a series of questions.
Okay.
I guess I can send them to Jeff and.
Well, yeah, mind you, if you have them now, just mention them to us, and then what we, yeah. What we could do, if you could just send them to Sandy, so that, what I'd like to do is get a whole package, so it represents, you know, the concern. And we can, you know, with your name attached, so we can recommend, you know, recognize our concerns as we move forward.
Okay. So I just got some overview comments about questions that I had about paper reduction, copy reduction processes at the school, because it seems, again, my, my take is that we spend a lot of time and money printing things out, and then throwing it away and recycling it. So I'd like to know if we're doing anything to address that. And then, in the budget, there were some comments about grant funding termination and new values for employees because of grant funding termination, but there was no previous values. So my question was, what was the, what was the rate, or what were these people, what was the line item value prior to the grants? So that we could understand what the increase was. So then I went through tab by tab, page one, item 101, administrative costs outgrew, outpaced everything else. To go through this now line by line isn't going to make a lot of sense without somebody being able to explain why things grew one hundred and fifteen percent, and. So preventative maintenance went up huge amounts. Then I compared the three grade schools to each other. So overall salaries grew ten point one six percent at Nyanic, but only five point eight four at Levee, and four point eight six at Flanders. So there seemed to be a fair amount of variation there that I didn't understand, when the overall budget grew for salaries at three point five four percent. Nyanic had ten percent growth in a lot of different areas, where Flanders only had like one percent. So when all this comes down, and all these separate things that I went through, Nyanic's school, for some reason, grew at ten percent, when the other two schools grew at about six percent. So I wanted to see if there was a reason why that was. And then I got into textbooks, electricity. Electricity varies thirty-four percent at one school and ten percent at another school. Why does electricity rates change from thirty-four percent to ten percent? That doesn't make any sense to me. I would think that we get our electricity from the same place, everybody should have the same expected increase in electrical cost. Again, preventative maintenance, I talked about that a couple of times, because that's got huge growth. Athletic transportation, not a big deal. Textbooks, seems like they're under control in some areas, but middle school went up quite a bit. Grade schools are all over the place. Again, electricity went up in the high school, middle school. And then I went to district wide, and district wide salaries went up sixty-six point six seven percent for part-time, twenty-five percent for certified, twenty-four percent for safety personnel, sixty-six point six seven for substitutes, or eight point one for instructional assistance, and then five percent for admin. It just seems like all their salaries went up huge amounts, and it's gotta be because of headcount increases. But one of my initial questions was, we don't have curves for headcount increases for students or headcount curves for staff and students both. So in the past, we have had charts that said, you know, this is what the population of the students were over the years, and we didn't have that this year, and Jeff said he was going to get us to us, but.
Bill, I did, that exact thing I did point out to him, that, you know, we don't have a feel for what the population is now compared to a few years ago. And we usually get a couple of years down the road what they estimate.
Yeah.
As well as the same thing is, and where does the staffing sit as well, too? So that was conveyed to me yesterday, but it'd be good for that to be included as well.
So a lot of this would maybe make more sense if I could see staffing, and if I could see students and things like that, and then maybe it would make sense. So the overall, like I said, the overall schools, Flanders, six percent, Nyanic, ten percent, Levee, six percent, high school, two point nine, middle school, two point two five. It just seems like there's different growth, and I don't understand why there's different growth in the different areas. So with all that, I mean, we know that these, the school budget this year has grown a lot. So then I started looking at the CIP program. And they're spending a hundred thousand dollars for lockers, and a hundred thousand dollars to repave that little parking lot. And there was, boom, 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 somewhere in here, there's a line item, oh, three hundred thousand dollars for new auditorium seats with electricity and network cables.
I can explain that one to you if you'd like. Oh, Anna's not here. We did, our meeting with them yesterday was over their CIP, which we indicated that was way too rich. And we asked them, they do have a priority, we asked them to give it a, you know, a good priority. And the thing they talked about with the auditorium, only because I found this out yesterday, is what they'd like to do is the areas in the back, the two like mezzanine areas, for lack of a better word, is probably put up some like folders in there, so you could use that area for, not honors, the AP testing. Right now, we spend a lot of money going elsewhere. They figured if they renovate that area, it could be used for that. That was one of the things, that had, what they had mentioned. And I don't think that was one of the highest priorities, though.
It just seemed to me that they were spending on Cadillacs everywhere. Everything is state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art. And I don't understand why they need that expensive chairs. If this is just, maybe I'm misreading it, and there's a couple of high-priced chairs in different key locations, but it just seems like this year to spend that much money on chairs with electricity and network ports seems a little excessive. And then my last question was about the new tractor that they want. Past years, we talked about combining sources, resources between our either Public Works Department or Parks and Rec, and the high school, the schools, because the school system is, generally speaking, their peak time of use is not the peak time of use of Parks and Rec or Public Works. And is there some way to share resources, so that, for example, this tractor could be owned by Parking Rec or Public Works, and the high school, or the school could use it when they need it? Do they actually need their own tractor? So I can take this, and I can send this to Sandy, and I can send this to, Sandy's going to send it forward onto Board of Finance?
What we did, Dan and I even mentioned to them yesterday, is that for the tractor, wouldn't it be better to do that under the vehicle acquisition program, if we were going to do it, too? Because, you know, and here again, we, you know, because last year, their CIP was about a million. This one is much, much higher than that, so. And here again, they pointed out that, you know, the, you know, with like the middle schools getting twenty years old, so we're going to need some things, you know, replaced. I mean, air handlers are good for about twenty years. One of the things that they also identified with, at the middle school, was a hot water heater. This is showing signs of failure, and it'll have to be replaced. It's not the, you know, thirteen hundred dollars we'd all have to pay, this is, and they got a quote of about seventy-five thousand, so I've told Chris, ought to get ahold of Julie, that's the regional shelter. I'm sure we could look, you know, let's get started now to see if we can get some FEMA money for that. Because there's a generator that powers that whole school, so, you know, we put them in that way. So I do, I do hear a lot of your concerns.
Okay, I'll forward this letter.
Okay, and just make sure that you have the mic, too, Anna.
I forget.
Yeah.
So I guess I just had some general concerns. It just seems like it's, the budget is kind of out of control. Let me, I, and I think that, you know, they have five different prompts that they want to, you know, fulfill different goals, but they want to fulfill them at every single school. And, you know, I, I think you have to do things in steps. So instead of hiring, say, four math coaches, maybe you hire one this year, and then next year you add another one, and you see how it's going, you add another one. They want to seem to like go from zero to a hundred and eighty in one year, versus, you know, taking it slower. My only, my other concern was with the capital improvement plan, you know, they want air handlers and HVAC. That's something they could have used with the, you know, ARPA funds, because it's, it's a one-time expenditure versus, you know, I think they have like fourteen teachers under the ARPA, which then, you know, they have to, I don't know if they're going to be putting it into the operating budget, but that was my impression. And that's my concern, that they're going to take all these teachers that they've hired, and now continue them. And it's just, it's just a lot. I think they have to focus on like, okay, this is going to be our goal for this year. Okay, next year, maybe we'll do this. But they, they have like five goals, and they want to fulfill all of them to completion. I mean, I think of it as a house. If your roof is leaking, maybe you do that, but maybe you don't put in the new wood floors, you buy the new chair. And so that's really my concern with, with looking at this.
Roseanne had a lead, Dan?
Okay.
No, I don't have any comments tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a couple. I share a number of things that both of you have already explained and gone into. I'll just, I just wanted to echo Roseanne's point about the lateness of the report. We, we came in for that presentation, and the report was in front of us at that point. And it's not the usual order of things, it, it does not help us to review. And, you know, that can happen, and I accept that, but there was also no explanation. So I had trouble with that, I'll be very blunt, you know. Okay, getting into some, a little bit, just a few particular things, other than that. I'd like to see some meaningful and clear comparisons. And I'm going right to the presentation material on per pupil expenditures, if anyone's got this, okay. So I think we need to know, are we using our DRG schools as a reference, district reference group? If not, why not for these various comparisons here? I have a list from when I was on BOF, and of what the DRG schools are, and only four of them make up this list. So for me, if you're not going to use your comparisons, why are you not using the comparisons that you should? And does that skew this in some way? And the reason I'm bringing this up is per pupil cost is important for us to have reference points. And then another metric is the percentages of increase in these respective school budgets. So just reading the local newspaper, you can see that school budgets are not going up by this amount, like in the area. So if you're going to compare yourself, let's do a little comparison, not just the per pupil expenditure, but let's, let's take a look at that. And, and if we are different, why are we different? If this, you know, if it's, if it's special education driven, then let's, let's hone in on that. But I just, I just need to, would like to see a little more meaningful comparison on those two points, and, and explain why we're not using DRG. And I know some of that's old information, the DRGs are old, maybe they haven't been revised. And if you're not going to use them, then let's figure out what you are going to use to compare. On the, I, I know that a lot of points have already been made about the capital budget. That was the first thing when I was able to look at the budget online before Wednesday night, because it had been approved by the Board of Education on Monday night. And thereafter, I took a look, and when I looked at that SIP plan, I, I was kind of in shock. It was a huge amount of money, and, and I was, you know, surprised that there was also not grander detail in here. Now, maybe it was because it was Board of Finance previously, but I recall getting not only the list, but also backup material for some of the projects. I mean, the bottom line is, you have the school budget in its entirety, the fifty-four million, I have the right number. Then you have on top of it, you have these capital outlays and expenditures. So I think it's really important that, you know, there be some, you know, obviously, some re-prioritization, do this more gradually, and just be mindful that, just be mindful that, you know, we have debt. And the debt, you know, comes due, and maybe it's going to come due and make this our situation even worse. So that actually brings me to my more or less final point, which is, and I'm glad that, Kevin, you're having these meetings, because I really think there needs to be that high-level discussion about financial situation, town side, school side, with the, with the key players, you will, key personnel, you know, Anna, Mariana, yourself, and Jeff, Joe Braga, Chris, Chris. And, and really have that conversation, because the, the sort of little, you know, sharing of information that can happen in those workshops back in November and December between Board of Finance and Board of Education, I was part of it, and I'm sure you've been part of it, as well as Bill, it doesn't really cut it. I'll be, again, I'm going to be blunt here, it doesn't cut it, doesn't cut to what we really need to do, which is to have a sense of where our financial universe is. And, you know, if we think, as Anna has suggested, that this is out of whack, then exchanging that information is helpful, so sitting down with that SIP and so forth. So, and it's not a closed situation at this point, we have time to go back and look. So, and my last request would be, on the revenue side, and we had this given to us a couple of times on Board of Finance, if there are standalone programs, so after-school program, before-school program, creative play school rentals that happen, let's, let's see that in that revenue sheet. Let's, even if it's de minimis, let's see it. And I think that's important for us to get a handle on some of that information, and coming directly to Board of Selectmen as well. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Sure.
Some comments I had, and I've addressed these to Jeff, too, you know, there's a lot of growth in special ed. And I said, you know, that it helped people understand, you know, how many are outplaced vice inplace, because here again, it costs a lot more money to outplace somebody. And if we're providing more services in-house, which is reducing the cost, that needs to be brought forward, too, because he said we're in very good shape, we only have thirteen outplaced, which is good, because I remember the, the cost of outplacement used to be, right, in the vicinity of about a hundred thousand dollar student. The state's supposed to, what, you hit a certain threshold, pay you back dollar for dollar for that. That never really ever happened. So, you know, Jeff did talk about that, and I said, those are things that, you know, we need to discuss and hear about, so, you know, some of the, some of my, I think some of my other concerns have been brought up as well. Just make sure, if you can, get them, you know, email them to Sandy, and we'll make sure, once we have the whole package, we'll send it off to Central Office, and we'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that when we do it, too. And we'll try and, the sooner we do it, Sandy, you got no meetings tomorrow night, so you'll have all day to do, not have to worry about that, so.
When should we have our comments to Sandy?
If, you know, by Friday morning at the latest, it would be, because then we, you know, I'd like to give them as much, the Board of Ed, get them to the Board of Finance, and we'll give them to the Board of Ed, too, so they know what our questions are, too. I'm sure, definitely need to give them to both people.
I just have one more quick comment.
Oh, sure.
And it's more of a question. Whenever I'm on Board of Finance, the Board of, like Jeff Newton or Mariana Stevens would come and like present, like just kind of give us an update. Is that something that happens on the Board of Selectmen?
No, but, you know, about forty-five seconds ago, I started thinking about that. So either you sent a, tell them that this way, but I think that, and I, and we could probably make it for just one meeting a month, I mean, not at both.
Just to keep, just to keep us in the loop.
No, I, I was thinking that exactly thing, as you, so, good, okay. Or it's not always Jeff, sometimes they just have a Board of Ed. Somebody, somebody coming in. No, excellent idea.
And it could be, you know, right after, you know, the consent calendar, then having.
Oh, no, that's just, it's sort of like when we have, when we're ex officios to something, we go pretty quick, get it, so they don't have to stay for.
Exactly, right in the beginning of the meeting.
I know they'd love to be here the whole time, but, yeah. So anyway, okay, any more comments on that? Okay.
I would, I would like to, while we get to the point, we start talking, start talking about next year's budget, see if we can't do some preemptive kind of desired budgets, so that we can kind of try to control the growth ahead of time, you know, targets kind of things. So maybe in a few months, we can have that conversation before next year's.
Well, you know, the nice thing is, you know, this year, I, I was thinking, like September would be a good time for me to start getting input from the Board for our budget. Because, you know, you take office in December, and then, welcome here, a quick meeting, and then here, here's the budget, let's go.
The budget's.
Fortunately, all of us have been through it before, but this is my first time developing one, although I am not totally foreign to it, so, you know, definitely moving forward. I think that'd be a good idea. And the Board of, and this is different from that, but Board of Ed always does a retreat. I don't think that's a bad idea for the Board of Selectmen to do that at some point in time, too, to talk about, okay, what do we want to do for that next year, so. But we'll talk about that later on, we're on the Board of Ed tonight, so. okay, what do we wanna do for that next year? So, but we'll talk about that later on. We're on, we're on the Board of Ed tonight, so. Okay, moving on, appointments to Boards and Commissions. You should have, we have a few people tonight. Ann, thank you for getting these people. And I talked to Len Salter. And as I said, he wants to, so he's not getting appointed tonight. He's gonna come to the next inland wetlands meeting. He said if he likes it, he'll be more, he sounds very interested. He actually called me. I think he was in DC or something, working, so it was very nice, you know, so.
All right, so the first of these is move to approve Nancy Kalal, Eighty Grassie Hill Road, East Line, as an alternate member on the Inland Wetlands Agency for the Town of East Line with a term to expire on January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any comments? All those in favor saying, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carriage unanimously.
Okay, move to appoint Diane Gardner, Eighteen South Pine Street, Niantic, as an alternate member on the Inland Wetlands Agency for the Town of East Line with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. Any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carriage unanimously.
Okay, and move to appoint Carlo Lombardo, Two Hillcrest Road, Niantic, as an alternate member on the Inland Wetlands Agency for the Town of East Line with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ann. Any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And one more?
A couple more, yeah. Move to appoint Carol Anne Gordon, Twenty-Six Broadway, Niantic, as an alternate member on the Historic Properties Commission for the Town of East Line with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan. Any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carriage unanimously.
Okay. Move to appoint Joe Braga, Director of Public Works, as the SCRRA representative for the Town of East Line with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Joe, Joe is, this is the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Recycling. It's a lot, it's basically garbage, okay? And Joe is the Vice President of the Organization. We realized we hadn't appointed him, so we're kind of getting him back, getting appointed to do that, so. Okay.
All right, and I think you seconded it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Okay.
Abstentions? Okay.
All right, set on that. Move to appoint Kevin Siri for a selectman as the alternate SCRRA representative for the Town of East Line with a term to expire on December four, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Can I just ask a question on that one?
So is it common for the First of All to be an alternate on this?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It normally is. I was as the deputy, cause Mark didn't wanna do it, so. And, and the next time I go will be the first. Joe, Joe is, like I said, the Vice President of this, so he's very, very involved in this. That's another, one of his, you know, many hats that, you know, does a really good job on, so.
Okay, great.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carriage unanimously. What I'd also like to do, we have to do the unaffiliated, which is department heads come up with a GWI for next year. In the past, it has been, when I was Deputy, it was Roseanne and myself. So if, what I do is entertain a motion to appoint Ann Santoro and Roseanne Hardy to talk, meaning would you have to work with the unaffiliated to determine a GWI for next year? Is there a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. And here again, that's just, they don't have, it's a not, it's not, we don't, it's a contract, it's an agreement, but it just determines their GWI for next year. So. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And I had asked Roseanne if she wanted to continue, cause I know her time is, but she said she enjoys that, so.
She's not here, so she kinda likes it.
No, yeah. Okay, the Riverhead Cemetery, I was told, and the word from counsel was, we didn't have to do anything on that. So we'll move on to ex officio reports. Start with you, Ann.
Can I just ask a question about the cemetery?
Oh, sure.
Are we now gonna go back and do some maintenance to it or something?
Just what, it's what we've been doing all along anyway. The East Line Cemetery Association has been maintaining that for the last several years. But now we're officially gonna be doing it, that's all.
Yeah, that looks like it needs some work.
It, it does. Well, the noble people who are putting in the station have promised to put a new gate in and the access into it, to the right of way, so.
That sounds good. There's some.
Yeah, no, there's.
Frosties or something, they're just all, just walk up there and dig in.
I've asked Mary Catillo to come back, cause we had, remember we had a presentation a few years ago? To talk about all the cemeteries in East Line. And it was maybe a twenty-minute presentation, but it was quite interesting. And that's one of the things they wrestle with is the headstone preservation, because these are all getting extremely, extremely old. So, so, but thank you, Doc. Good point. Ann.
Yeah, I don't have anything to, to report on. My, sorry, the commission was canceled last night. And the wetlands, I did attend last month, but there really wasn't anything that happened that's noteworthy.
Okay. Hey, Bill?
Flanders was canceled. Building's tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I had library and I did attend, but I have, I have some thoughts, but I didn't collect them well enough to report tonight. It's up to report next time. I was busy with.
What have we been doing?
Yeah. Okay. It was a good meeting, it's library book, okay.
Okay, Dan?
Okay, so, let's see. I was at the Parks and Rec meeting and they've reported that they have dates for special events that are coming up. And I'll just review those in case anyone's listening is interested. And then it'd be Boardwalk Five K will be April twenty-third. Touch a Truck, they're doing that again this year finally, May twenty-first. Charlie's Race is June tenth. Celebrate East Line will be July sixteenth this year.
I'm sorry, what day is that?
July sixteenth.
July sixteenth will be Celebrate East Line. And the Wednesday concerts will start again on July sixth. And the Friday concerts will start July eighth. And if anyone's interested in the Beach Pass, they'll be on sale starting on March thirtieth.
Can you just repeat, June tenth, you said or something? I missed it.
I'm sorry, the what?
June tenth, you said?
Oh, Charlie's Race.
Thank you.
That, that used to be, that's named after Charlie Fenwick, who was a former member of the Parks and Rec Commission, who passed away.
Okay, good.
And let's see. And I attended Wellsco meeting, Waterford East Line Shellfish Commission. And, you know, they, they're still grappling with a problem on insurance. They're a creature of statute. They're not really a town commission for either Waterford or East Line. They're, they're a creature of state statute. And so they're, they're not really covered by the workers' comp policy of either town. So this has been a big problem for them. They've been trying to resolve it. You know, they have people that are out in boats, taking water samples. And I don't know what the answer is. And if anyone's got ideas, I'm sure they would appreciate.
We've, we've come to a resolution.
You have?
Yeah.
That's, taking care of what's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's great news.
And the thing is, it's only when they're on land, when they're on water, they're covered. But if they step onto the land and fall down, that's, but, and also too, some of them take, they have to travel. So if they're in a car crash, but we have worked that out.
Oh, that's great news.
I met with Pete and Harris and that, and we've, yeah, we.
It's been a big problem for them.
It's a long time.
It's always a worry for them. And when you're on a commission, you don't wanna, you know.
Cause they're not technically town employees, so they're not covered by our workers' comp. So it's worked out, so.
That's good. And the other thing was, I meant, I brought this up one time. There's a problem with the dock over on the Waterford side, where they hook up the boats. But I think they're, they're working on getting that repaired and coming up with some quotes. And it looks like they've got a resolution to repairing the dock in a way that makes sense. Instead of eliminating the finger docks, they're gonna be able to repair them and still maintain them in that way, so. So that's my report from Wellsco.
Okay. But you, you knocked a lot of mine off with all the good stuff coming up. Except for this Saturday at ten AM on Hope Street is the Oniantic Race. It's run by the same group that runs the triathlon. It's really not run by the town, but it's a group. They run, they dress, and then they all get together on Main Street afterwards. So hopefully the weather holds up. It looks like rain now, but let's hope it holds up for that. You've seen, read the articles and seen the construction on one eighty-five Main Street. That's well underway. They are pouring the footings today. The estimate they're hoping for is fourth of July, which I think is very, you know, energetic, but they think they can make it and they have been moving quickly. Amtrak Fence, there's a nice article on that yesterday. And I can't thank Beatrix, I can't remember the last name, Dalton from Senator Blumenthal's office, who's been reaching out to me, provided me with a copy of the letter that, that we, that he sent down, supporting us. And it wasn't, it was to the CEO and President of Amtrak. And as I've said, I'm sure his correspondence carries a little bit more weight than mine. So, so anyway, and we, you talked about Celebrate East Line Day. There's a Miracle League Gala on the first. I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars a person. It's gonna be at the Mohegan Sun in the Expo Center.
Is that April first?
April first, yes. So, and that was scheduled for January, but how do you?
Got canceled.
Yeah, put off to. On another positive note, the East Line Pool is now the Tim Hagen Pool. I got to attend the dedication of that for him last week. And it was nice to see some former Board members and a couple of former superintendents there. I served with him for eight-plus years on the Board of Ed and he did another eleven after that, so. And then, update on the pandemic. We've read it, there are some concerns about it popping back up. But the COG meeting this morning indicated that they're still comfortable. It's coming down. Hospitalizations are coming down. So they, they really weren't too concerned there. So I don't think anything else from that meeting, and there really, nothing out of the ordinary. Oh, okay. Starting sometime next year, we don't know the date yet. But you'll wanna pattern your vacation around when they're gonna be replacing the bridge at Exit Seventy-four. When they do the northbound, or southbound lane, people traveling southbound, it'll be for forty-eight hours. You'll have to get off at Exit Seventy-five, everybody, off of Ninety-five. Come to the four corners, turn left, and get back on at Exit Seventy-four to continue north. There's no way that's not gonna be a major inconvenience. They, they are gonna give us lots of heads up. Emergency services are aware of it. We'll have plenty of time to plan. And coming south, they're going north, will be a little bit longer process. But the plan is you'll come off at Seventy-four, go right across the road and get back on at Seventy-four because, you know, it's a nice wide area. It's gonna be a long process for a few years there, but that's the major inconvenience. It'll be a two-week period where one sixty-one will be closed at night from about eight at night till five in the morning, right around there. We don't have dates yet, but it's gonna be a major inconvenience. And, you know, the, I'm sure Dean Road, Society Road are all gonna be, Lover's Lane are gonna be really heavily traveled at some point. Just look at yesterday, we had the bridge closed for five days, for about five hours. And we had heavy traffic, but apparently it was way backed up on Niantic River Road for people trying to get from there. So as, obviously, as more information becomes available there, we'll do it too. That's my report. There's no public here. No Selectmen's response. And again, thank Ann and Ann for all your hard work over the last several weeks.
Sure.
It was very exciting, actually.
Yeah.
You know, I feel like we had really a good group, dynamic group.
Oh, and it was. And I, and I think you addressed a lot of concerns, so, anyway, so. All right, all right, thank you. And I'll take a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Opposed? We are adjourned.